Good morning, welcome to Harden County Commissioners Court. Today is Monday, May the ninth. All members of court are present and this meeting will be called to order. Everyone will please rise for the invocation delivered by Commissioner Pelt and remain standing for the pledge.
I do have a Father, we thank you, may it bless this life, pray now that you be with the court as we conduct the affairs of the county, give us the wisdom and guidance we need to make good decisions for the people. Pray for our men and women in uniform, pray that you watch over them, be with their families if they're away from them. But give us where your faith is in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Mr. Kirkendall, will you please lead the pledge?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Item number four, Linda Austin, County Clerk, approval of minutes of prior meeting. Good morning, Ms. Austin.
Good morning, that would be a regular meeting on April the eleventh.
So moved. Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Pelt, any discussion? Uh, yes, sir.
We not approving the twenty-fifth and May the second?
Both meetings. Ms. Austin, is that correct? We have April twenty-fifth and May the second, minutes. So moved on.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Pelt to approve the minutes of April twenty-fifth and May the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner. Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer, presentation and approval of registered claims to be canceled by court. Good morning, Ms. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of eight hundred seventy-one thousand, five hundred sixty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. They were the, these were the county bills and payroll expenses presented in Commissioners Court on April twenty-fifth.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six, Deborah McWilliams, presentation and approval of cash statement.
In our general checking account, we have one million, four hundred twenty thousand, nine hundred twelve dollars and forty-six cents. In our investment account at Wells Fargo, we have five million, eight hundred thirty-six thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars and two cents. In our tax pool general account, we have six million, five hundred three thousand, nine hundred forty-four dollars and thirty-four cents for total cash funds of thirteen million, seven hundred sixty-one thousand, five hundred five dollars and eighty-two cents. And I blessed to do the interest rates.
May we approve cash statement?
A second. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Item number seven, Angela Gore, County Auditor, payment of county bills. We have Candace McKinney sitting in this morning for Ms. Gore, good morning.
Good morning. Pre-approved expenditures and transfers for April the twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth were twenty-three thousand, fifty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. Pre-approved expenditures for May the second through May sixth were two hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. Today, May ninth, two thousand sixteen, the expenditures for Commissioners Court are one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. The total expenditures and transfers are three hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and ten cents. Gross supplemental payroll for April the twenty-second was five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. FICA was four hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. Retirement was eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Total transfer for April twenty-second payroll was seven thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. Gross payroll for April twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, was four hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and fifty-one cents. FICA was thirty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twelve cents. Retirement was fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-one cents. The total transfer for April twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen payroll was five hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-four cents for a total combined payroll transfer of five hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents.
We pay the bills as presented.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you, Ms. McKinney. Item number eight, Monique Sinnett, Public Relations and Marketing Administrator of Spindletop Center, adoption of resolution number seventeen dash sixteen, recognizing May two thousand sixteen as Mental Health Awareness Month. Good morning, Ms. Sinnett.
Good morning. Um, my name is Monique Sinnett and I am Public Relations and Marketing Administrator at Spindletop Center. Um, and we are here today to recognize May as mental, National Mental Health Awareness Month. Um, and I, I would like to go ahead and, I guess, read the proclamation. Mental Health Awareness Month, two thousand sixteen. Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas, all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas, prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas, there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being, and whereas, mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas, with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and live full and productive lives, and whereas, each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Harden County Commissioners Court recognizes May, two thousand sixteen, as National Mental Health Awareness Month and call upon all the citizens of Harden County to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities to support mental health recovery.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, we at Spindletop Center want to thank, um, our Harden County Commissioners and Judge McDaniel for giving us the opportunity to present this proclamation. And, um, what we really like to do throughout this month is really educate and, uh, make the community aware that mental health services um, are available in your community. Um, we do serve the Harden County area, we serve over eight thousand people every year, um, experiencing substance abuse and mental health diagnoses. And, um, also, we at Spindletop Center, um, invite everyone to come out to our, um, it's a mental health symposium called Let's Talk About It, and that will be taking place on May twenty-fifth from three to five P M. in Beaumont on our south campus. And it's really an opportunity to learn more about our programs and services, ask any questions, and, um, really just get some more information about the services that are here and provided in the area. We really want to let everyone know that we have, um, a, a team of really caring professionals who are here to help and we really want everyone to get, um, all the help that they need.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
May we adopt resolution seventeen dash sixteen?
So moved, second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you again. Item number nine, adoption of resolution number nineteen dash sixteen, designating the newspaper of general circulation of Harden, for Harden County. I believe it was in two thousand eight.
Two thousand seven, sir, that y'all last reviewed, uh, this government code requirement of determining based upon your county, its shifting demographics, et cetera, uh, the usage of the print media within your county to determine the newspaper of general circulation. Uh, after some discussions here with the county in the last week since we were here for your special meeting, it appears that the Sills B B, uh, for your procurements, uh, and other matters have been designated, uh, as the newspaper of general circulation. The reason that we would like for the court to effectively adopt, re-adopt, redesignate, so to speak, is because as we move to the next agenda items relative to the possible issuance of these certificates of obligation, there is an affirmative obligation to notify the public in the best manner possible. You will publish as well as post-notice of the upcoming meetings where those will be considered as required by the Certificate of Obligation Act, working in conjunction with the government code designating this. What we ask the court to do is if it's their pleasure, we have prepared a resolution that identifies the Sills B B. If that's not the pleasure of the board, we will certainly amend it, the resolution, uh, before you execute it. But in addition to that, we've asked the judge of the court whether, uh, and it's an additional cost, uh, but it's simply a matter, is if you feel that there is a benefit in publication, public, uh, publicizing notice uh, in the same manner as we would in your newspaper of general circulation, the notice of this upcoming, uh, uh, actions relative to the certificates of obligation, then as a supplement, you can advise us that you would like publication made in a separate publication, uh, that may serve, uh, citizens in the county. But the primary function today is to make an official designation, and I believe this will follow form, designate the Sills B B again with how, uh, the publication of other matters for the county is currently being undertaken.
Yes, sir. And, uh, I talked with, uh, purchasing agent Misty Whitney this morning. Uh, we have been using the Sills B B for all of our legal publications. Uh, they are, uh, paper of countywide circulation. Uh, it's probably the paper read most by citizens in the Harden County and it's also the least expensive to advertise in. Uh, any of the other papers are about twice the amount of the Sills B B, so, uh...
Does it go for elections as well?
Yes, ma'am. Doesn't mean that's the only paper we can advertise in, but that's the one that we'll choose, or hopefully the court will choose to, uh, be our legal notice paper.
I did, for this runoff, I did go ahead and put it in all three.
Sure, that's, that's no problem.
Uh, Judge, for the general circulation, I go with the Sills B B, but for this one time, for these certificates obligation, I think we should go with also the Beaumont Enterprise and Liberty Vindicator because the Sills B B does not cover a lot of the western part of the county. I know they do come to Sour Lake, but it's on a very limited basis, so, and I think for these certificates obligation that all citizens need to be advised.
I agree.
Or have an opportunity.
I move with adopt resolution one nine dash one six.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion?
Do we need an amendment to, uh, include the Beaumont Enterprise?
No, sir, this is just the resolution for all.
We'll adopt this, but we've, we've heard the court and we will make sure that that also happens.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number ten, Guy Goodson, Bond Counsel with Germer P L L C, adoption of resolution number twenty dash sixteen, authorizing and approving, approving publication of notice of intention to issue Harden County Texas Certificates of Obligation, Series two thousand sixteen, also known as the certificates, in a maximum principal amount not to exceed one million, one hundred thousand dollars, authorizing the county judge, county clerk, county auditor, county financial advisors, county legal counsel, and bond counsel to take all actions deemed necessary in connection with the issuance and sale of such certificates, and approving an effective date.
Thank you, Judge, again, for the benefit of those i- in the audience, uh, uh, this is a requirement of the Certificate of Obligation Act that you adopt a formal notification to publish in the newspaper, the first of which publication must be not less than thirty days before the date by which time the court would act on, uh, selling those obligation if, i- if those, uh, terms and conditions are approved by the court. In order to meet that schedule, since you all do have two meetings each month, this would then be planned for the twenty-seventh of June, which is your second regularly scheduled meeting, which gives plenty of time for the weekly publications of the weekly publica- published newspapers, and then the Beaumont Enterprise, of course, and daily, so, not, not an issue there. So, we, we do recommend approval if it's the pleasure of the court.
Yes, sir, and in, uh, section three where it says the Sills B B, is this where we'll need to modify this and add the other two newspapers?
No, sir, uh, wh- what we will do is we'll just send a supplement to the, to this and indicate that the court has indicated that we're going to publish in the other two newspapers. But we're only including that because that is the newspaper of general circulation. That is the one that the Attorney General is going to look to, to satisfy the statutory requirements of the Certificate of Obligation Act.
Okay. So moved. Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, Mr. Goodson, when will be two, we have to have two public hearings, is that correct?
Uh, uh, no, sir, you, you actually will, uh, 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 have a, a presentation by Mr. Gilli and them, I believe, probably the first meeting in June to give you an idea of what they anticipate the sale terms will be, so we intend to be at both that meeting. And then on the twenty-seventh, your second meeting, is when they will have brought you a, uh, an offer of purchase of your C O's from someone in the marketplace. They will present what we hope is fairly close to the outline proposal we'll discuss on the next agenda item, uh, and the, uh, um, and that, the public will also have a ch- a chance then to hear exactly what the final terms and conditions of the sale. But today, for the benefit of those in the audience, uh, after, uh, after this agenda item, uh, or at the next agenda item, we'll be happy to go over your financial advisors, sort of, what they anticipate the scenario will look like here in about six weeks.
Thank you. Item number eleven, Guy Goodson, adoption of resolution number twenty-one dash sixteen concerning issuance of certificates of obligation or other tax exempt obligations to finance the design, construction, development, expansion, improvement, and equipping a courthouse annex building for Harden County, Texas. Mr. Goodson, on this resolution and also for the Commissioners, the last paragraph has an amount of eight hundred thousand in there and I believe we had talked about nine hundred thousand.
Okay, yes.
That the county would be up, uh, responsible for an amount up to around a hundred thousand.
All right, we'll be happy to, to, to make that amendment with the approval of the board. Uh, before you adopt that then, if it would be appropriate, Judge, Mr. Gilli, uh, came last time and gave y'all two scenarios, that time based upon two different total amounts, y'all funding, uh, the certificate, the, the courthouse annex costs completely with debt and then about half and half with debt and county, uh, 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 reserve funds. Uh, what he presented today is effectively that same, uh, document that he presented last time for the smaller, uh, admitting it to a million one since he presented at a million last time. Uh, and I really believe scenario, the first scenario there probably falls more in line with what, yeah, what he and I understood from the court. The goal was, which was to blend in these certificates, uh, over, uh, a period of time for their maturity, which runs ten years, uh, to make the least effect on your total tax rate for that ten-year period. So if you look at that first scenario, effectively, uh, what you've, what you see, four lines over is your existing debt service, uh, a principal amount that's slightly higher, we have to meet a two percent per year minimum payment, uh, according, uh, to the government code and the Attorney General. Uh, and then it's, if you get over, you'll see on the total debt service, four lines from the, the, the right side of the page. That shows you that for that ten-year period, Mr. Gilli's done his very best to make that debt ser- the total debt service, both what you have outstanding and what you're adding level over that ten-year period. The second scenario is simply to show you if you wanted the, the debt for this one obligation, this one million one, to be fairly even over each year, uh, then that second scenario is what that represents. But you'll see in the total debt service, it makes it more like a bell curve. Your small amount, it's going to increase while your other debt's outstanding, uh, your other debt rolls off in two thousand twenty-three, so it would be like a bell curve and the last four years will be very low. But Mr. Gilli said he's, he presented that just in, uh, to be complete with the court, but, but he did want me to acknowledge that the scenario, uh, number one, was the one he felt like after listening to the court, members of court, uh, was the scenario that they will work towards in a sale, which again, over, uh, that ten-year period of that debt keeps it as close to even, uh, so that your, at, so that your, um, debt service on bonds or C O's is not affecting materially the total tax rate in the county. So, uh, the, the resolution, it is the next agenda item, again, for the benefit of those in the audience who weren't here last week, is in order to enable the county to begin work, uh, be it site work or other possible acquisitions before you actually have money, uh, in hand in, in August, um, the, uh, Internal Revenue Code allows you to adopt a reimbursement resolution. This basically lets you look back sixty days from today and then forward, uh, till you close and fund the bonds to help you, uh, pay any cost, and, and since you're going in your pocket anyway, uh, for this project, it gives you the maximum latitude, make sure that if you want to reimburse any particular cost out of the bond proceeds, you would be able to do that. Uh, and since you all have a fairly, hopefully, fast-track intention to get the, a project constructed, we didn't, we want to give you every opportunity that we could, uh, within the bounds of law, make sure that you had the opportunity to spend funds as and when it works for the best interests of the county. So, we do recommend, uh, also the adoption of that resolution.
And without it, we would not be able to start construction as soon.
You could start, but there would, might be a question, uh, Commissioner, about whether, out of the bond proceeds, now, out of your own cash, you can do what you want, but it would be just a question of what you could fund out of the, uh...
But with this resolution, we can...
Do it and then reimburse that.
And we reimburse ourselves.
Yes, sir.
I move with option resolution number twenty-one dash sixteen.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion?
I would just advise the court on the reimbursement, if we could, move slow and not get ahead of ourselves and spend more than, I know that we're going to reimburse it, but until we actually get it approved, it's...
I can agree with that.
Yes, sir. Same, I agree. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twelve, Guy Goodson, discussion and possible action regarding legal service engagement of Germer P L L C as special counsel and bond counsel to Harden County, Texas, for legal services related to the issuance of these certificates of obligation.
Thank you, Judge, I'm sorry, I just wanted to say it's a privilege for me, uh, Kate, uh, people in my office, to work with you all, work with your county auditor and, and the county clerk. Uh, we try to assist between the bond issues and making sure we work with them on getting appropriate filings made with both the state and federal authorities. It's been a, a very pleasure, I wanted to make sure that I want to recommend it, and so the county clerk know that we appreciate all the assistance that they've given us over the years.
Thank you, sir. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Judge, we'll get back and get, uh, send a letter back up for all the executed copies of the resolution.
Okay.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen, Randy Blanks with David J. Waxman and Associates, discussion and possible action to adopt Harden County Guidelines for On-Site Sewer Facilities Assistance Program. Morning, Mr. Blanks.
Morning. Uh, Texas Department of Agriculture, reviewing the recommended guidelines that the committee submitted to a state agency, and they have approved those guidelines. Now they're requesting the Commissioners Court adopt the guidelines so we can start the application process. Receiving an application for low to moderate income households.
I would move that we approve the guidelines as presented, second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pelt, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. You had the easiest item this morning, thank you.
Mr. Goodson, make a log.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Blanks. Item number fourteen, Dana Hall, District Clerk, discussion and possible action to approve and accept for filing in the minutes of the court. The District Court orders appointing the county auditor for the term of two years and directing the payment of the county auditor's salary.
So moved, second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? Ms. Hall, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Since they were filed for record May fourth.
All right, thank you very much. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Item number fifteen, Commissioner L W Cooper Junior, Precinct One, adoption of resolution number eighteen dash sixteen, approving advanced funding agreement for bridge replacement or rehabilitation of all-site system. Commissioner?
Thank you, Judge. Uh, this particular item on the agenda, uh, is entered into an agreement with the, uh, state on replacing a bridge in my precinct off of, uh, Village Creek Road. I think the, if I'm looking at this correctly, the total project cost will be five hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred dollars. And, uh, the matching fund which would come out of my budget was twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and six, so I think this is a pretty good deal. The, uh, state has already inspected the bridge and said that it does qualify for this particular program. Uh, and on that twenty-seven, eight, uh, it could go in kind match as well. So I would, uh, move that we adopt resolution number one eight dash one six.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number sixteen, Commissioner L W Cooper Junior, discussion and possible action for approval to enter into an agreement with the state of Texas for advanced funding for bridge replacement or rehabilitation located at Village Creek Branch, and approval for county judge to sign same.
Move.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seventeen, Commissioner L W Cooper Junior, discussion and possible action to prohibit any new development in the Wheeler Road area until drainage problems are resolved. Commissioner?
Thank you, Judge. Um, I know recently, uh, the judge reappointed a committee to, uh, revise or go over our, uh, policy on, uh, development as far as subdivisions and things, and all that's going to be, uh, a needy, uh, committee to look into. But in the meantime, in the area of Wheeler Road, which to me is the fastest growing area of Harden County right now, we have a major drainage problem down there and I know the court has had, uh, several meetings in the last couple of years in regards to this, but, uh, because of things that are happening down there, uh, and of course, with all the, the amount of rain that we've had recently, it has caused major problems down there. Um, one area, this adjacent to Wheeler Road is off of, uh, what's the name of those roads in the city that's having so much problem, Jenny and April?
Yeah.
Uh, I had a meeting with the new, uh, engineer of the highway department, and the, uh, highway department owns the old railroad bed that separates the city from the county that's right behind that subdivision in there. And, uh, the city has actually went in there and dug a, a drainage ditch, which to me has helped a little bit. And, uh, the highway department gave us permission to, uh, carry our equipment on there, but they don't want us to change anything that's not already existing, nothing new that's going to be built in there. So the city manager called me, he was getting some, uh, resistance from some of the residents out there in regards to, I believe, Mr. Cormier's, uh, drainage of his, uh, detention pond, and, and they addressed all that. But the city manager called me and said his equipment was out there and that there was a, uh, a beaver dam that was clogging up a drainage that goes from that trestle on to, I believe, it, Mr. Baxter, is that your property that's right behind that, back there? Okay. Uh, he asked me if I'd stand by while his equipment, uh, cleaned that blockage out. And it was still on the highway department right away, but it led to Mr. Baxter, Mr. Baxter is a developer off of, uh, Wheeler Road in that area and Mr. Cormier's foreman is in the back, back there. These are our two major, uh, developers in that area. Anyway, I stood by while they cleaned that out and, and the water temporarily was relieved. Is Mr. Jackson here anywhere? I've, I've got several emails from Mr. Jackson who lives off of, uh, Jenny Lane, is requesting that I step down from my position because I'm not doing anything about the drainage over there, of course, that comes with the territory. They have to find somebody to blame for that, but, anyway, what happens is, about a year and a half or so ago, we give Mr. Cormier permission to, uh, build houses along Wheeler Road and the court didn't have to accept it in because there was no roads or new drainage that was going to be involved in this. How many residents have y'all built right there along Wheeler Road?
I think, Commissioner, there's twenty lots there, we've probably put in ten.
That, that sounds about right. What, what this has done, and for whatever reason, I'm not throwing the blame on anybody, but what this has done is caused, uh, more volume of water to cross our cross culverts, uh, under Wheeler Road, which leads to Mr. Baxter's, uh, development over there. And he's got a couple of residents over there that has been, uh, in jeopardy of having water in them, according to them, due to the new development over here, because once you build up a certain height, that water's got to go somewhere. So, my proposal, I know that the committee's going to look at, at, uh, requiring the developers to have detention ponds, but my proposal today is to, uh, cease any new development on Wheeler Road until we can get this taken care of. Everybody that calls me, I've told them, Mr. Jackson, who I, I stay in contact with quite frequently and other residents down there, is, my opinion for long-term is those, that area needs a drainage district. And a drainage district is a new taxing entity, so a lot of residents wouldn't want that. Whether or not it would pass on the ballot, I don't know, but that's going to be the long-term solution, in my opinion. I might be wrong there, but I've tried as a, as a commissioner and this court has tried as a court to do everything we can to assist those people in that area, and, of course, we have people back on Johnson Lane and, and Ariola and all those that say because of all the development up there, we're throwing more water on them in the back. One thing is the amount of water that we have, the amount of rain that we have, I mean, that's something that we can't control. Uh, I've talked to Mr. Pelt... I've talked to Mr. Feld since I've been in office and we're limited on funds as far as what we can do on drainage with road and bridge funds. I mean, we specify what we can and can't do and a lot of people don't understand that, so whether or not this will pass, I'm gonna propose today that we do not issue any new development permits on the Wheeler Road area until this problem is taken care of. But before that, I would like Mr. Baxter or Miss, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Howard, Howard Johnson.
Mr. Johnson to speak or suggest or whatever y'all think. I'll turn it over to Mr. Baxter if you would like. And anybody else in the audience, feel free.
I'm Howard Johnson.
Good morning.
With Colmire Homes. We've been building up there for ten years now, I guess. I don't know what's happened. Up until about two years ago, we didn't have any issues whatsoever. I don't know if a beaver dam or whatnot has blocked the little drainage between the ditch that we dug along the trestle and I think it's Brushy Creek. I know y'all approved money to do a study. The city's participated. I don't know what has happened with that. I don't know if y'all have learned anything or not. The city has dug a little ditch that has helped a little bit. We've increased the size of our detention ponds. We're gonna put another three acre pond in to try to hold our water back. I don't think that we're a big problem. I know we contribute to it, but we hold back a lot of water. We've had, we've had four hundred-year storms in the last year, or so I don't know, the rain's just been disastrous for everybody. I don't know, how's that study coming? Is there any?
I understand it correctly, that study is at a standstill because one of the landowners that is in the area would not allow the engineer or surveyors to go onto his property. Once we checked with our county attorney, in order to go on the property to do this survey, we can't make that property owner allow him on there. Now, if we had a survey that was already turned into us and it was making a recommendation that we needed to go on that land to do something to help the drainages in that area, then we could condemn that land or take that land or go on that land, but as it stands now, there's no legal way that the county can make the landowner allow those engineers to come on his property. So at this point, the drainage study is at a standstill on that. The judge and I met the other day and he made attempt to contact city manager in Lumberton and they're getting ahold of the firm that we have the contract with doing it to find out where we are, if there's gonna be a meeting between them or whatever, but at this point, if I understand correctly, we're still at a standstill. Have you heard anything?
Mr. Whiteley did call me back, I believe it was Tuesday afternoon and he was supposed to make contact with the landowner and get back with me, but I haven't heard from him.
Okay.
Is Mr. Whiteley your engineer?
Yes.
Maybe between the two of us, we could get him to make that phone call.
Going back, Mr. Johnson, to what you said earlier about your detention ponds, I have a question there. And of course, the committee is gonna look into all of that and make the suggestions that we need for the developers that might help and everything, but as it stands right now, the existing ponds that y'all have, during seasons or during the times that we're not experiencing the heavy rains, how much capacity are you allowing in your detention pond?
Three and a half acres, in the existing pond.
Okay, and how far from max is that, three and a half acres?
We are going to dig an additional three and a half acres.
Not talking about the ones you already have, in other words, how much rain can you hold before you start overflowing out of that, oh, your existing?
Probably three or four inches.
Three or four inches.
It depends on how, because we've got a twelve-inch outfall, but we detain it with a twelve-inch pipe. When it gets up so high, it goes in an overflow. Now, I've got a little three-inch submersible pump that, once we reach the bottom of that twelve-inch pipe, we continue pumping and it pumps down about six inches a day. If we can get it down, which one problem is, we haven't had any relief to get it down like we should be able to. We can probably hold another two or three inches if we can pump it down more.
Do you, and I know you've already hit on this one time, do you have any suggestions that you wanna throw out there that might would help us on what we're dealing with right now?
The city has helped tremendously. The ditch needs to be a little deeper. That would help Jenny and April, of course, those two houses in the corner are just built way too low.
Exactly.
They can't, the state said that they could clean out the existing, but they didn't really want the ditch to get bigger.
Right.
I don't know if y'all could have any influence with the state to let the city go bigger and deeper. Tom has suggested that we could help with that with a track hoe, which we would be more than happy to do to help, it'd help everybody out, even on Wheeler Road. Cause all that water has been coming down behind our subdivision. Now, the Westwood Three, which we call the village, everything besides the stuff on Wheeler basically goes to the north on the railroad track. So that water really doesn't come down that direction, goes, well, I'm not sure, near that other creek back the other way. Of course, all goes to.
Everything's going to Boggy.
Yeah.
From there. Uh, Mr. Baxter?
I think all that was, that was great. What we've done to alleviate the situation before it became a situation is in our subdivision where the forty-foot wide county ditch goes through, is we have went through there and we had burnt out all the trees, so there's no resistance where the water comes through. That's helped tremendously over the last couple of years, like he said, until about two years ago, we had no issues. So there's a lot of new development going on. The ditches that we've had, the amount of water that we have coming into our little two and a half acre subdivision in the front has increased dramatically. There's just, of course, some trees have been cleared out along Wheeler Road. That opened the land up to where the water could get out of the forest a lot faster, so we're still having the same amount of water coming at us, but it's coming a lot faster. And I took some pictures of that, so that's, that's not helping the situation. So the water's just coming at us a lot faster. And since so much dirt has been brought in, the level of the ground has been raised quite a bit. Wheeler Road used to be the, what the old timers called a ridge road, that's where, that's why Wheeler Road was built there, because it was on a ridge and it kinda acted like a ridge or a dam, and now then there's been so much new development, it's, it's flowing quite well over Wheeler Road. And it, and it had never done that before. In the eleven or so years that I've been there, it had never came over there once until about a year and a half to two years ago. So I think, you know, for everybody to work together, I think a lot of, just some redirection of some ditches and some deeper ditches would go really well. As far as, you know, cutting all development, you know, around Wheeler Road, that would put our, our family's company at a complete standstill. Everybody has to make money. I don't know what the solution is, but that would, that would put us, that would put us at not being able to make any money for our company. Everybody knows what that means. You can't have the same expenses and not have any income coming in. But there are great issues that you've brought up and I think if everybody just works together, that there are some, probably some pretty easier solutions. I went out there and put boots on the ground during the last six floods, literally. I put my boots on and I go look at where the water's coming from, where it's going to, and I think just some new or some deeper ditches. And it's not as a bigger, bigger problem, at least now, that we think it is, it's just gonna take some redirection of some water, so.
And that might be something that we need to look into. Let me tell you what I'm facing and you probably already know this. It doesn't matter really what we do here today, it doesn't matter what we did last week or what we're gonna do next week, my phone's gonna ring off the wall, that's part of the job, that's why I'm in this job, so I can handle that. But the reason I said that is basically, in my opinion, what we're dealing with is like someone living on Crystal Beach and saying, well, maybe we won't never have a hurricane, right? Because where y'all building that down there is a bay gull, it's flat. My personal opinion is twenty-five years from now, whoever's sitting in this chair is gonna be facing the same thing because you are not built there. But that's the fastest growing area of Hardin County. What are we gonna do? It's flat, there's nowhere to put the water. But the first phone call I get is, what y'all gonna do about this or what you gonna do about that? You know what I'm saying? They gotta find all those people down there, gotta find somebody to blame for that. Every time it rains, I get pictures sent to my phone from residents that live on Johnson or whatever. As far as county commissioner having revenue, just what you just said right there, I wouldn't want anybody to be out any money and it brings revenue into the county. So, you know, are we gonna allow this to keep going on or are we gonna allow, what's the solution? I don't have the answer.
Right, I know there's a, there's a lot of natural lulls in the land that we own and the land that all of us own as developers. And I went back, we were gonna put forty-three houses in there, I've went back and looked at it and brought that down to sixteen houses in that natural low area instead of building it up and bringing hundreds of loads of dirt in there, which is what's happened in the past, we're gonna leave it natural, that low area sitting there. So that's gonna be a huge cost to us to allow that land to sit to the side because it's the right thing to do for everybody downstream. And doing that without any, you know, I mean, we could go in there and do it, there's no law against it, but the right thing to do is to use those low areas and leave them alone and build the houses on the higher areas of the land, but we haven't talked about that, but that's what we've decided to do. So we went from forty-one houses to sixteen to leave those low areas alone, so.
Have you, y'all work well with Mr. Johnson?
We haven't talked before.
We never have.
Okay.
But I'm sure working together would be great.
I would suggest the idea that you proposed to my foreman about redirecting the ditches on the backside of that, once those woods were opened up and you had, I don't even know if he's aware of what we're talking about, but I would suggest that either somebody from your county gets with somebody from his and see, because that's their land.
Right.
And see if you suggest that, if they agree with it, whether or not, you know, that's just one reason why I wanted both of y'all here today. Whether or not that would work, I don't know. You seem to think so, you've watched it, you said, and they might have ideas on their end that y'all could do.
Uh, Nubbin?
Yes, sir.
I've just been jotting down here points that have come out of this discussion. Drainage is a very technical and a very legal issue. And the deal, I think you commented, you just said no law against. I would advise you to look at that very carefully, because I believe the EPA and the Corps of Engineers will have a different opinion than what you have.
Okay, thanks.
Very different opinion. Drainage study that we entered into with the city, and I think that the county's purpose, as I understood it, was entered into it so at some future time, if the county ever decided to go a drainage district, we would have that information. As far as that information giving us something we can go out and start doing drainage with, that is not true. Somewhere, someone mentioned a drainage district for that area down there. As I understand the law, and we're getting into legal opinions now, as I understand the law, Hardin County, based upon a petition from the voters, can hold an election for a drainage district, but it's countywide. If you wanna do a specialized drainage district, that's an issue that the Texas State Legislature has to pass. The last one put up was in the Fine Wood area, it failed eighty-twenty, even in the area of concern. If it had gone countywide, it probably would've been a lot worse than that, but these things have to come. Right now, road and bridge funds are very limited in how they can be spent for drainage. Basically, road and bridge funds, drainage for road, or for the roads. And unless we can build justification that they drain the roads, I know the people, especially those moving in here from Jefferson County and places where they have drainage districts, do not understand, the county does not have any authority to drain your property. Now, we are trying to approach that through subdivision regulations. And the county does have some authority in subdivision regulations, not to go out and start draining the country, but to require a sub-developer to do retention ponds to hold their water. Now, also in the state of Texas, not where you have a copy out of the law, but there's a thing called water laws. And if he goes over and builds a subdivision that throws more water on your subdivision, then you can sue him. Because whoever's there first has a position, or if one deprives another landowner of water. So if y'all are building subdivision, they're throwing water on some of the residences, they can sue you. Now, these are expensive things to prove, difficult to prove. But then what happens in Hardin County is, the area that you're talking about, the more development takes place there, and this is the reason for the retention pond is, the more it's throwing it over on Alvin and me. So, you know, we don't want your water, we can't handle your water. Now, what Nubbin is proposing here may be a good idea, but have we had any conversation with Rebecca on it? I don't think it's gonna be legal. I do not think we can set subdivision regulations and make requirements on retention ponds, but I do not believe that we can just say, now, city can. City has that power. A county cannot just say, we stoping all development. You're violating private property rights, which we do not have the power to do that. It's a very complicated issue and the judge has said maybe we need to have a workshop on it. I think that would be a great idea because in that area, particularly the area you're talking about, it's gonna be more problem every time you build another pad up, put another house in where the water shoots off, you're putting another brick in the dam. And development may need to be stopped in that area, but I don't think we have the legal mechanism to do it. But it's gonna be more and more problem. I'm surprised there hasn't been more private suits than there have been down in that area. Because there are laws that govern this stuff. The county's not a party to them. But there have been so many issues of, I just wrote down seven while we were talking here, that, you know, this would take lawyers to give us advice in a workshop or something, which is hard to handle in a session like this.
Well, and I have a couple of observations. I've noticed that Villas Creek, even with all the sunshine last week, didn't really go down. And so all the other tributaries have nowhere to go. The Natus is still way out of banks. And so the two where everything runs into, which is the Natus and Villas Creek, are still very full. Pine Island Bayou, still very full. And so until that goes down, we're all stuck. And we're talking about two years, what I've noticed in precinct two, especially like going down toward the river, I've had issues down there for about two years because of the water, the increase in rain. And then, Ms. Wolford, can agri-life extension provide like a two-year comparison, like the last two years of rain versus the previous two years of rain?
I'll have to look it up, but yes, I have to turn in weekly rain reports. As long as the previous agent did that as well, I can't pull up the county rain records.
Cause that would be very nice to provide the court, and especially for our citizens, because I think it's been deceptive on how much rain we have actually got. Cause if it rains today, three inches will have major issues, because Villas Creek is still full, Pine Island Bayou's still full. And people don't understand why two or three inches rain would do this, but it's because everything's still full.
It's not even here. They get three inches of rain north of us, everything comes south.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
That's what people don't understand. It's not what we get, it's what people north of us are getting.
Right, and on the days that we've gotten hammered, I've got friends in Cherokee County and up toward Texarkana, they were hammered, you know, five times worse than what we were.
Chris, the groundwater district that we're in with Jasper County, they can provide that data for years back. But these counties are in that groundwater.
That's gonna be the route to go.
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson, I appreciate you coming. And Mr. Baxter, thank you. Both of y'all have my cell phone number, so.
We'll, we'll talk.
And I know y'all work well with my foreman's in the back, back there, I know y'all work well with him, so I certainly think we need to do something. All the points Mr. Feld brought up are good points and I'm well aware of those, so I do appreciate y'all coming. I would move that we table this item.
Second, and hold a workshop on it.
Can I speak real quick? Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Feld. Mr. Roberts?
And to further what, and a lot of people don't understand the drainage in my area, in the south end of Lumberton. People think it all goes off to Village Creek or whatever. The whole east side of Lumberton, including Woodcrest, drains to Boggy Creek. It comes back and comes under Highway sixty-nine and goes to Boggy Creek. Well, the more water that's being pushed in that creek, it's raising the, raising the creek levels and there's no way for that water to get out, just like he was saying. And now that Pine Island's full, when it does rain, Boggy Creek backs up and it's gonna back all that water up. I'm sure the people in Woodcrest, they're befuddled because the water can't get out, it's just staying there. I don't know what the solution to that is, other than retention, detention ponds, but we're gonna have to have a big one somewhere. Because all of that water, no matter what you're doing there, is still coming south and it's gonna get to the point where it's not gonna, you know, it's gonna stop. We've got, I've got people that live along that creek, off of Neely Road, it's unprecedented how high it's been coming up in their yards and stuff. Uh, it's, it's unprecedented how high it's been coming up in their yards and stuff. Uh, there's people that are getting water close to their houses on the south end that have never had water close before. And it's because all of that water is coming down. We just rebuilt, um, Parker Roads Bridge because of this. And, uh, since I've been in office, it's gone underwater six times. So it, it's, it's just a, it's just a matter of time if we keep building and pushing more water south, before all of that's just gonna be a flood area, period. So that, that's just, I didn't know if everybody understood that it's not just the water coming from the west side of Lumberton, the northwest side of Lumberton going south, it's also the east side of Lumberton coming into Boggy Creek. Um, uh, at the park, the, uh, not the, not the city park, but our Veterans Memorial Park, I've seen the water up to the concession stand there twice, and that's out of Boggy Creek. Uh, that never used to happen, and now it's happening several times.
I think a workshop would be a great idea.
Yeah.
Uh, get shit.
And I think this rain study will show, we've gotten a whole lot more rain in the past twelve months than we have in forever, for a long time. Commissioner Cooper, your, uh, motion is to table this item and organize a workshop for a future date. Is that right? Second by Commissioner Pelt. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Baxter. Item number eighteen, Commissioner Chris Kirkendall, precinct two. Discussion and possible action for approval to stabilize and seal three tenths of a mile on a county road to be determined, located in precinct two with a polymer-based stabilizer as a demonstration for future use. Commissioner?
Uh, we have a product that is, uh, is, that is not oil-based, it's a polymer-based. And, uh, the company is willing to, uh, give us a demonstration price, uh, to see if it's something in the future that we would wanna go with. And, uh, it's a very good price, and so my motion would be that we approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Yours was easier than Nubbin's.
Number nineteen, Misty Whitney, purchasing agent. Information regarding the vendor occupying and operating the courthouse cafe. Misty?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We already have some food out there.
Yes.
Um, so, Ms. Penny Salter was awarded last court, um, vendor to occupy the cafe. She plans to open on May nineteenth. She's already been working there cleaning and getting it ready and kinda gets familiar with the equipment and things. And she's working on insurance requirements and the health, and health department inspections now, so. I do have a menu if anybody wants to know how to get one.
Yeah, looks good. Looks good.
Are they, uh, did, are they looking still to open on May the nineteenth? Is that the target date? Sounds good. Thank you, Misty. Item number twenty, Misty Whitney, authorization for county judge to sign fee agreement between Harden County and MPTX Associates Incorporated for professional services related to grant application development and project management activities.
Some of the, second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion?
Is, is this on just any grant or is this on that sure grant?
It's the buyout.
The buyout.
Buyout, okay.
We approve them as the, uh.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, now, now I gotta have approval to sign the agreement. Anything further? All right, have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Cooper. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-one, Misty Whitney, permission to solicit bids for voiceover IP, also known as VOIP, telephone system for courthouse annex and all county offices.
Some move.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion?
Can, uh, Misty, can you explain that to us?
What is it?
Do you need some more information? Uh, we, our current Toshiba phone system is nine to ten years old. It has to be rebooted at least once a week. Um, usually it's the sheriff's office that has to do it if it's after hours. We can't get new phones or handsets when they break. They're, um, refurbished ones that we have to purchase. And then also the programming, National Network does our management of it, so anytime we need anything changed, we're charged for them to program it. With the voiceover IP, it allows us to do all the programming ourselves. And it would just, it has a whole lot of other options that our current phone system doesn't have.
Would it allow us to know who is calling from the courthouse when we get a call?
Yes, sir.
Good.
And I think our current system is actually older than that. I think it's closer to fifteen to seventeen years old.
Been there a while.
Yes.
Here when I can.
This system would tie in all county offices, even satellite offices.
Two, four, six.
That's another thing, I, I don't know if everybody heard, but, uh, the, uh, the courthouse phone system, if we're able to go this route, uh, all of the satellite offices, being the commissioners' offices and the JPs, would be tied into the courthouse phone system. So each office would have a courthouse extension. And, uh, the way I understand it, you can see on the screen, if I try to call Commissioner Kirkendall, I'll see that he's on the phone or what have you, and, and, uh, it's supposed to be very nice if we go that route. So I guess I need to call for a vote. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-two, Misty Whitney, permission to solicit proposals to furnish labor and equipment necessary to combine all departments together on one IT network, increasing stability and security of the network and preparing for the future integration.
Some move.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
I'm not up on the, uh, IT stuff. You're well aware of that, Judge. But, uh, would this eventually take place of the software that the precincts use, that nobody else uses? In other words, our secretaries, uh, create vouchers on a different system than what the regular courthouse. Would this eventually replace all of that?
I don't think it has, this is only how you can do it with the software.
Okay.
It would support whatever probably software that you would go to. It's more, our internet goes down a lot. It would make our internet more secure and stable. And we would have a dedicated public access wifi, where it would be protected. Where, right now, we have wifi for the public, but we have to give them a password that would just be a.
Okay.
One that's dedicated just for public.
Thank you.
I know from our standpoint with the new system, we've had issues in the last few months, and I think the auditor's office has too, that the connectivity is not right. Somehow, we can be in the middle of processing checks and we lose internet connection, and we have to reboot the whole system. We have to do a restore. It, it's, and it's getting worse, so we really do need.
I think that's how this came about, was there's connectivity problems, I think. Ms. Austin's been having some connectivity problems in her office, and the second floor's having the same problems. So, uh, but I think Commissioner Cooper's question was mainly, will we be able, and correct me if I'm wrong, would we be able to submit our invoices and vouchers electronically, so they don't have to keep driving up here? I think that was the question, and I don't know if we can get an answer to that today.
Advantage of us going to whatever this new system was that we all went to is to cut down on paper, uh, travel or whatever. And I was just wondering if this was part of that, so.
Is that something we can answer today, or we need Angela for that?
It's, it's not, it's not gonna solve that issue. It's only gonna solve the connectivity issue as far as, um, like, like Misty said, having a stabilized connection. It's not going to, uh, I mean, this doesn't address any of those other issues that you guys are concerned with.
All right.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-three, Commissioner Alvin Roberts, precinct four. Discussion and possible action to ban smoking from Veterans Memorial Park located in precinct four. Commissioner?
Okay, I, I was contacted by the, the soccer, uh, people that, uh, occupy the fields most of the time down there. And, uh, they were concerned with people smoking around the kids that are playing soccer, which is understandable. Um, I spoke with, uh, Ms. Hogg, who is, um, in charge down there, I believe, right? And, uh, I, I told her I'd get with, uh, Rebecca Walton about it, because I wasn't quite sure if we could, we could do that. And I talked to Rebecca and she said, yes, we could. Um, what I, what I would propose, and it's because I've been contacted by someone else now, uh, is, is to ban the smoking around the, the actual fields where, where children are playing and stuff like that. But to allow an area, uh, possibly around the pavilions, uh, for people to smoke. Um, kind of, I, I don't know, it, it would totally be up to the other commissioners, but I would think that would be a, a fair, fair thing to get the smokers away from the, the children who are trying to play soccer or the kids playing basketball or whatever out there.
So you proposing a designated smoking area?
Yes.
This would probably end up just like, I, I say probably, this will end up just like putting a speed limit sign on the road.
I know.
Uh, as a county, because we do have people that are questioning or asking us to do this, we can put signs up that says, no smoking except in designated smoking area. But I don't think that this is a situation where we would tie up the sheriff's department, bringing a deputy out there to enforce this. This is just more.
We al- we already have, um, signs at the park for, you know, and no alcohol, no drugs. You know, there's no, there's no signs up there. Uh, and that's when I'm saying no, no.
Yeah.
Signs. Um, this would just be adding another, another stipulation to being in the park.
It just gives us a little backing to be able to say, you know, there's no smoking out here.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, we almost had a fistfight over it. And so it just gives us a little, a way out of sending them to a different area.
Thank you. You have anything for them?
I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we, uh, ban smoking from certain areas of the park and have a, a smoking designated area designed in the park.
And the county attorney did say this was legal.
Yes.
I'll say it. Whatever Alvin wants to take heat for.
It's like Nubbin said, it's part of the job. We get it every day.
Best part of park is smoke-free.
Yeah, the other, the other parks, most, most things are smoke-free, where they're having, you know, activities for the youth. And, and I think that just falls in line.
Have a motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Pelt that we ban, or that, uh, smoking is banned in most areas of the Veterans Memorial Park located in precinct four, and that a designated smoking area will be identified. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Move with your.
Second.
We're adjourned.
Most people wanna buy it by it anyway, I bet.